Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our council meeting this fine Wednesday, May 15th. I'd like to start by acknowledging that we are gathered on Treaty Six lands, a part of the traditional territories of the many First Nations, Métis, and Inuit in Alberta. The town of Drayton Valley is grateful for the knowledge keepers and elders and the stories and teachings that they share of these lands and its people. I will now ask everyone to stand for the singing of our national anthem. Some additional feedback or something coming from somewhere? Is it from one of the TVs, Nathan, here? Oh, that was Colin singing. It's singing this morning. Are there any additions to the agenda this morning?
Two things, Madam Mayor. One is Proclamation 5.2. We did not receive the official application for that, so we're going to request to remove that. And I guess it's not an addition to the agenda, but when you get to approving the minutes from the last meeting, I forgot to include the closed motion for out of school. So that will be added before the minutes become official and signed.
Okay, so we have deletion, 5.2 World Family Doctor Day, the request of Councilor Gomana. We have corrections to the Corrections or Amendments of the May 1st, 2024 Regular Meeting of Council Minutes. That's right, and to include a motion. So that will be added to the motion there. Okay, so is there a member of council that would like to accept the agenda with the deletion of 5.2? And then I'll just say the deletion of 5.2 right now. Thank you very much for that. Deputy Clark, all in favor? Oh, you're not in favor. All opposed?
In favor.
Thank you very much. I was just going to ask if you were online, Councilor Ballas. Okay, and then Corrections or Amendments. We've already talked about the motion to the May 1st, 2024 Regular Meeting of Council Minutes. Any other Corrections or Amendments? Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion with the correction of the motion made in the minutes of the last meeting? I think that's right. Councilor Evans? Thank you very much for that. All in favor? Okay, and that is carried. Councilor Ballas?
A little bit of discussion. I think there is a couple of motions, and I would like to hear those motions first.
Okay, so are you talking about the addition and the deletion to the agenda?
No, just the addition to the minutes. Is that not where you're at?
Yeah, so when I had opened up the agenda, I had called for an addition to the agenda. So rather than the addition, there was a deletion, and that was for Proclamation 5.2 at the request of Councilor Gomana. And then Mr. Ferris had then spoke of a correction, so that would have been under the Corrections or Amendments.
And what are the amendments?
Sorry?
What are the amendments?
So Mr. Ferris will go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The amendment is to add the motion that came out of closed. I don't have it here in front of me. I don't know if Nancy has it right there. No, we don't have it in front of us, but we will make sure that the motion is added to the minutes, will circulate it to all of council, so that you can see it before we sign them and they become official.
So, sorry to bring this up again. The adoption of the minutes may defer till the next meeting, once we see it.
Sure, I can defer that. So would we make a motion to withdraw the motion then, since we voted? It'd have to be withdrawn. Okay, so, okay, Councilor Evans will withdraw the motion for the Corrections to 3.1, May 1st, 2024 Regular Meeting of Council Minutes. Any comment, any comment, question, or debate on that? Okay, then I'll ask all in favor.
In favor.
Okay, thank you. And then now we'll need a motion to defer the approval of the correction to May 1st, 20 Regular Meeting of Council Minutes. So, Councilor Ballas, would you like to make that motion to defer that?
I shall move.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate? And I'll ask, do you have comment, question, debate?
No, not for that motion.
Okay, then I'll ask all in favor.
In favor.
Okay, and then that is carried. Councilor Gomana, did you have a question?
No, I just, because my name was mentioned, just wanted to clarify regarding the removal.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
Just, we have the policy of proclamations, and we needed to have a proclamation request. As we were going through our proclamations last year, the Black History Month proclamation was one of the proclamations that was supposed to come up to the council, but it wasn't, it didn't come to the council because there was no proclamation request, rightly so, because our policy says that it need to have a proclamation request. So, to be fair, I think, you know, if you are following the policy, we need to follow the policy on all of them, and hence here that we haven't received the proclamation request. I'm all for the proclamations, all three proclamations, but it's just that it doesn't fit our criteria of the policy. That's why I requested the removal. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other question? Councilor McGee?
And somebody can show me the policy, I assume?
Yes, Councilor McGee, there is a policy to that effect.
And the policy says if we don't get written something, 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 we can't follow through with it. Because for me, I think it seems like a little redundant policy. I'm just thinking that World Doctors' Day, proclaim it. I don't get it. So why we got so in the weeds with a policy, I don't know, but...
I agree, and same with the Black History Month. It's a thing that celebrated all over Canada, right? It should just be able to come as a proclamation.
So typically, how it works right now is that how proclamations end up on the agenda. If there is a group, a person, an organization that requests a proclamation, if it comes through email, that's how it gets on agenda. There's many holidays and celebrations that are celebrated in every calendar month, so it would be a large task for our administration to find every holiday and event and then include it as a proclamation. So I know when we talked about the policy, it was if anyone wants to request, could you do a proclamation, that we would do a proclamation. So that's what happened here, is that there was a request to do a proclamation, but I believe Councilor Gomana is asking for the additional, what is this called? The additional proclamation form request to be filled out as well, in order for that to proceed ahead. So we did proclaim Black History Month in February of 2022. There was a proclamation that came forward, as well as we invited. Could you remind me, please, Tom, what was the gentleman's name from Breton that we invited? And he did a little presentation for us? Yeah, the historian that came to council. But in 2023, last year, we didn't receive the proclamation, so that's why we wouldn't have made a proclamation, just like I think every, anything that doesn't come as a request, and we don't know, right? So it doesn't come. So these were the proclamations that came via email. There was only one that filled out an additional form, so maybe what the question at hand is, is how we want to proceed forward. If it comes through an email, are we fine with that, as Councilor McGee suggested? Or are we looking at them to fill out an additional form to finalize it? And open up for discussion. Councilor Gomana?
I agree, and that's the thing, that's, you know, I humbly request the policy to bring back, and we have a discussion on that. Thank you. Okay, I would like to make a motion that we bring back the proclamation policy for review. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table to bring back the proclamation policy for review. Any comment, question, or debate? My only comment would be, I guess, to echo again, Councilor McGee's thoughts on, I think, if somebody is taking the time to reach out to our office, whether it's through one of the councillors, myself, or administration, to ask for us to proclaim, I think that let's just keep it simple, make the proclamation and that. So we'll look forward to that coming to probably a GNP meeting or next council meeting. What are you thinking, Mr. Ferris? Does it...
I think it's a relatively minor change, so we should be able to bring that back to the next meeting, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much for that. Then we'll call the motion. All in favor?
In favor.
Thank you, Councilor Ballas. And moving along, is there a member of council that would like to adopt the May 1st, 2024 Regular Meeting of Council Minutes? Councilor Gomana? Thank you very much for that. All in favor? Bill?
That's not, I thought we deferred that.
Sorry, Bill, you're breaking up a little bit. Could you repeat that?
I thought we deferred that.
No, that was Corrections or Amendments, number three. So we haven't got that far down the agenda yet. We're just on number four for the adoption. I guess it would have been the May 1st. Or is that supposed to be the one today?
It's the May 1st.
It's the May 1st one.
I'll, I'm sorry, I'll retrieve the...
Sorry, Bill. Okay, that was carried, so now, Councilor Gomana?
I retract the motion. I humbly request to retract the motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that. All in favor? Oh, my gosh. Well, we haven't even got the decision items yet, and we've already got 15 motions going. Thank you very much for that, Councilor Ballas. That is carried, and then we'll move on to the proclamations now this morning. We do have two proclamations. The first proclamation this morning, just going to, so which one? 5.2 is deleted. Okay, so the first proclamation today is Community Disability Services Professionals Appreciation Week, which is May 19th to May 25th, whereas over 15,000 people are employed in the community disability services sector in the province of Alberta, whereas having a disability is often isolating from individuals. It is crucial that we support this sector and its employees to make sure every Albertan is given the opportunity to live rich, meaningful lives in their communities through access to services, whereas disability service workers are valued for the positive impact their work has on the lives of people with disabilities and their families. Whereas the province of Alberta recognizes the important work of the Alberta Disability Workers Association for the advocacy in raising awareness among Albertans of this essential workforce. The global community now faces extraordinary challenges such as environmental degradation, climate change, food and water shortages, and global health issues. Therefore, I, Mayor Nancy Dodds, on behalf of the council of the town of Drayton Valley, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to the 25th as Community Disability Services Professionals Appreciation Week in the town of Drayton Valley. And our next proclamation this morning is proclamation for the Moosehide Campaign Day, which is May 16th, 2024, that is tomorrow, whereas Canada is facing a crisis in intimate partner violence with more than four in 10 women and children having experienced it in their lifetime. This epidemic cuts across all demographics, but is especially harmful to Indigenous women and children who are twice as likely to experience violence from their current or former partners. The Moosehide Campaign is an Indigenous-led grassroots movement that allows people to take steps towards reconciliation and eliminate intimate partner violence in Canada. Wearing the free gift of Indigenous medicine, which is the Moosehide pin, it is a way to show your solidarity with victims and to make a commitment to honor and protect the women and children that are in your life. All levels of government are choosing to embrace the Moosehide Campaign. Last year, mayors across Canada took part in the campaign by sharing videos of support and making proclamations, including Ottawa Mayor Mark Sudcliffe, Edmonton Mayor Amergeet Sohe, Halifax Mayor Mike Savage, and many more. Therefore, I, Nancy Dodds, dated at the town of Drayton Valley in the province on this day of May 15th, 2024. There'll just be a correction to this one here, the proclamation. I see it says May 1st, just on this one. And that is it for our proclamations. We have no public hearings, no delegations, no business, and we will jump right into our decision item this morning. 9.1, first up is the Recreation Fee Assistance Program. And that is, I'm guessing, Ms. Lola Strand this morning?
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
So the Town of Drayton Valley Recreation Fee Assistance Program is administered by the Community Services Department. It is to provide Drayton Valley residents, low-income residents, with the opportunity to participate in the town's recreation programs and activities at a subsidized cost. Brazza County also offers the program for county residents. The program has first rolled out during COVID, so we didn't see much uptake during that time. In 2023, we expended just under the allocated $10,000 budget, helping 20 families. It was very near the end of the calendar year when we ran out of funding. Now that the program is no longer new in 2024, and it's become well-known, we have already received 22 applications and have expended just under our $10,000 allocated budget, and that happened in April. Thanks to this program, 29 adults and 25 children are participating in recreation. And although there is an option to apply the subsidy to a gym pass, all applicants this year have chosen passes at the Ricochet Oil Corp Aquatic Center. The majority of those 22 families are previous applicants, but we do see new applicants coming in. We think that the reason for receiving so many applications during the first quarter of this year is likely that people are eager to get the support at the beginning of the calendar year. We do expect more applications to come in during the upcoming months. Will not publicly advertise, the website now says, if you click on "Apply for the Recreation Fee Assistance Program," it says that we are no longer accepting applications at this time. So some options. One option would be to provide more funding to continue the Recreation Fee Assistance Program for the remainder of the year. Administration's recommendation is to use $5,000 from the CEO Contingency Fund. The consequences to that would be that more low-income residents will have access to the town's recreation programs. If this is the decision, then council would need to make a decision about where the money comes from, based on the current approved budget. At the moment, there still is $5,000 available in the CEO Contingency Fund, though this contingency fund will come under stress if the allocation continues at this pace and trend. Potential reallocation of current approved 2024 operational budgets would impact services and require separate consideration and direction from council. Option two would be to keep the Recreation Fee Assistance Program on hold for the remainder of this year. The consequence to that would be that low-income residents who have not yet applied would be unable to access the town's recreation programs until 2025. Therefore, council would not direct any budget adjustment or allocation in the current budget. This means that if folks try to apply for the Recreation Fee Assistance Program, we will then tell them that they will no longer be able to apply during this budget year as the funds have currently been depleted. So basically, option two would be, in principle, similar to taking this report for information only. And I guess, looking forward, there's some other things that council may wish to consider. But first, let me just speak about the other recreation subsidy options that families do have. There are other supporting programs that are not municipal that families can apply to for financial support for recreation programs for their children. These subsidy options have their own criteria. Parents can go online to find out more information and application process and forms. One of those is Kids Sport, which is for children ages 5 to 18, and the Canadian Entire Jump Start program, which is for children ages 4 to 18. Those programs can be applied to any sport, not just the recreation programs. If families do need support to require any assistance in completing those applications, they can reach out to the XSS office over at Rotary House. So going forward now, council can, if you wish to do so, provide administration with additional direction related to the future and potential changes of the program. With the increase in applications in 2024 that we are seeing, we expect that we may see even more in 2025. In anticipation of the increase, council may wish to consider either, one, none, or both of the following two options for direction to administration to be given at this time. Direction A would be to direct that administration bring forward a request for council's consideration during the 2025 budget process to increase the amount for the Recreation Fee Assistance Program from $10,000 to $20,000. The consequence would be raising the amount of funding in the 2025 budget from $10,000 to $20,000, may double the number of low-income residents accessing the town's recreation programs at a subsidies rate. Or direction B, to direct administration to bring a report to council with proposed changes to the criteria to the program for discussion and consideration. The consequence may be that change in the eligibility criteria may result in fewer applications being able to qualify for the Recreation Fee Assistance Program. Therefore, the $10,000 amount may not be depleted quite as quickly, or looking at changing to a lower amount allocated per individual, which may also provide relief to that $10,000 allocated budget. So financial implications. An increase to the Recreation Fee Assistance Program in 2024 was not anticipated, so would need to come from the CEO's Contingency Fund. In this case, there's significant more use of the town's recreation programs, facilities based on this Recreation Fee Assistance Program. Operational budget could be expected, though it's hard to quantify, as revenue decreases and its likely low expenses increase will not be triggered by surpassing staffing ratios. This does align with the town's legislation, Town Plans of Inclusive Diverse and Warming Communities. The stakeholder communication strategy would be the application process would be reopened, and the program would be continued to be advertised. Received applications that were on hold, which I do have two currently, will be contacted and processed as per the current criteria and available extra budget. So the recommendation is that council approve an additional $5,000 to the Recreation Fee Assistance Program to be paid from the CEO's Contingency Fund, as outlined in Report AAR 24108.
Lola, you mentioned other grants and financial assistance being available. Have we assisted any of these residents in applying for those other programs, and have we seen any success there?
I don't think we get a lot of requests in the XSS office. The applications are processed online, and they're fairly straightforward, so we haven't seen a lot of questions. Therefore, I'm not sure of the uptake that those programs are actually receiving either. I know that organizations such as Minor Hockey, for example, really try to defer families to Kids Sport and Jump Start. They can't access our municipal Recreation Fee Assistance Program for things like hockey and things like soccer and those things, so I know those organizations also refer people to those programs.
Okay, so there isn't necessarily an outside program that's directly applicable to our, what we're offering here?
They could. A family could also apply to Kids Sport or Jump Start for a pass at the Ricochet Pool. They could either or.
But we haven't assisted anyone at this point in trying to...
Not recently.
... pursue those others?
No. But within our application form and our criteria, we do direct families to those programs because we're subsidizing costs in many cases, depending on family size. In many cases, we're subsidizing the cost, so we do direct them to those programs to say, perhaps you could also apply here.
I see, to top up the cost or cover the shortcoming?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. The first one, Lola, would be, how much are we subsidizing each person per se?
It's $200 per individual.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the second one is that on your description piece, it says, you know, $10,000 to $20,000, but the recommendation is $5,000. Would you want the $10,000 or the $5,000?
For this year, we may not anticipate that many more applications, because we see many in the beginning of the year, so I would expect that $5,000 would be enough to cover the remainder of the year. However, anticipating how much the program has grown over the past year, that would be in anticipation of, I mean, we could get 40 applications next year now, because the program is getting out there and becoming more well-known.
Thank you.
And so, $200 per individual? What's the criteria? If I apply, what do I have to tell you?
So what they have to prove is they do have to prove that they're a Town of Drayton Valley resident, because as I mentioned, Brazza County has the same program, so Brazza County funds Brazza County residents, so they have to prove that. And then it's based on family composition and income. So what we use is the LICO scale, which is the same scale that Jump Start and Kids Sport and other communities then use. So it's called, it's the low-income cutoff scale. So they have to provide us with proof of income to determine if they're eligible, if they're meeting the financial criteria.
And what am I going to do with the $200? What do I, buy a pair of skates, or what?
No.
Anything I want to do?
No, you're gonna, you could put that towards a gym pass, or, as I mentioned, families this year are using it at the pool, so we're subsidizing their pass at the pool.
Oh.
So for families, for example, because it's $200 per individual, in many cases, families end up getting their family pass covered for the year. For an individual, it's just subsidizing the cost of the pass. It just all depends on the number of, if it's an individual or family, but yeah, most are using it towards the pool.
And family pass at the pool is $200? And family pass at the pool is two hundred bucks?
Family pass at the pool is for a young, one-year pass is five hundred and seventy.
So just subsidize it, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you, county residents are applied to the county?
Yeah. Yeah, and the county has, they have the exact same application criteria and application form as we do. Their uptake has not been as much as ours.
And do they do that through a social services department at the county, or is it just general?
It's through community services.
Okay, thanks.
Any other question? I'm gonna go to Counselor Clark first, and then Counselor Commander.
So, do we know if the applicants have gone to the other subsidy streams or no? Like, we don't have that question, do we?
No, we don't know that.
Should we or could we? Because I guess where I'm going with this is my preference is that other streams are explored first. And then once they get that, then they don't necessarily maybe qualify for this, which would allow others to, you know, go through the process and maybe get funding from the town. So I'm wondering if that's something we could add, or does that make sense?
Just have a question in there?
Yeah, because I guess my thought is just, you know, if they go directly to town, it's just an easy button, right? Taxpayers' dollars subsidizing that stuff, whereas if we can get private entities to pay for it, then I think that's probably a better way of doing it for the municipality anyway. The other thing that I wanted to talk about too is just, so if we have the same people coming back every single year, that may preclude others from accessing programs, right, that maybe are late or those sorts of things. So is there, do we ever look at that in terms of, you know, they've accessed this for four years in a row? And these other people have applied, but they haven't got it because maybe they were late? Or have we looked at anything like that either? Just in the spirit of fairness?
We're starting to track now that we're getting so much uptake. We're starting to track. First, surgeon, we're gonna start circling back and make sure that the applicants who have received the subsidy are actually going to the pool and actually using the passes. And yeah, if we do end up in a situation where there's not enough funding for everyone, we may have to start looking at changing the criteria, just to make sure that, like you said, that other people get the opportunity as well.
Yeah, and I guess the last thing I would say is just a bit of a statement. I mean, we can't, the municipality can't be everything to everyone all the time, right? So, you know, we have to be, I think, prudent with our tax dollars, and in this case, these are tax dollars that are going towards this stuff. I'm all for fairness and inclusivity and all that sort of stuff, but at what cost, I guess, at the end of the day, right?
Counselor Commander, do you still have a question?
No, I was gonna make a motion, but now Counselor Clark's comments there, I think we need to come up with the addition to the recommended motion. So your thoughts, Counselor Clark, is to add to the criteria that we will check if all the other avenues are explored?
If they've applied for other subsidy.
Okay.
Or have they received it even, right? So if they've applied for that and they're getting the town, and it's kind of like, let's give everybody an even playing field, right? So I think we need to understand that as well.
So I had two questions, one saying, have you applied for other subsidy, and have you been successful? Do you like to make a motion, Counselor Commander?
I will. Maybe I'll add that with the changes requested by Counselor Clark. Once he can.
Maybe the motion could read, could I suggest what the motion could read? That council approve an additional five thousand to the recreation fee assistance program to be paid from the CAO contingency fund as outlined in the report, with the addition of adding a question to the application form to ask if they have applied for other subsidy and if they were successful in this request.
So moved.
So Counselor Commander, did you get all the wording? Ms. Thompson, yes, okay. So Counselor Commander has made the motion. Is there any comment, question, debate on the motion? Go ahead, Counselor Clark.
So I'm just looking at the additional directions for council's considerations, and I see that direction B to direct administration to bring a report to council with proposed changes to the criteria of the program for discussion and consideration. So I'm just thinking that might be a, you know, rather than saying we're gonna throw another five thousand dollars at this, let's see what it looks like first, and then we can make that decision, but that's just what I'm thinking.
Okay, well, there is a motion on the table for that, so I guess maybe we'll vote on the motion, see how it goes.
Friendly amendment.
Oh, you gotta ask, you gotta ask Counselor Commander, not me.
I'm gonna propose a friendly amendment to change the motion to direct administration to bring a report to council with proposed changes to the criteria of the program for discussion and consideration.
I'm sorry, I'm respectfully denied it just because it's a five thousand dollar decision and, you know, having a report come back and all of that might be little. And we've done this before as well, last year, and it has been a successful so far. So I guess if the current motion defeated, then we'll do that. Sorry about that.
So we can vote on the motion and then see how that goes, and if not, then Counselor Clark can put a second motion ahead. Any other comments or questions on the motion? Everyone's clear what the motion is? Yes, I was just gonna go to you, Counselor Ballas. Go ahead.
Thank you. I totally agree with Counselor Clark. There are other options out there, Canadian Tire as a program. I agree that the criteria that we have should be considered or looked at, maybe updated.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Counselor Ballas. Any other comments? Counselor Revins?
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Clark as well. You know, this program and also our grant program is starting to push the limit there, too. We're running pretty low on funds for the coming year here. And I just, I'm concerned that we're slowly seeing some budget creep in these couple of programs. And so, yeah, I would be in favor of adjusting that that criteria as well and seeing it come back and approving the new criteria. So I'm not sure where that leaves us as far as.
I think that Counselor Commander had made a motion and Counselor Clark had requested a friendly amendment that was denied. So I think we'll vote on that and then see where that goes, where that goes. For me, I think that there is a need in the community for it. It shows in the numbers. I think it's important to support. I do understand that our budget has always been tight and it seems to be getting tighter, but I'm okay with going ahead with the motion. Just in talking to some of the businesses around the community, I won't mention names, but Counselor Clark and I had one conversation with a company that had said if there was a youth component, I guess, or school component to it, that, you know, they would fund things like that. So I'm just of the mind that we go ahead with the motion and then maybe approach some of these companies and see if there's some dollars that would subsidize, you know, some kids. What company was it that does the free swim and, is it Vermillion at the pool or on Fridays or Saturdays?
For ECDC?
No, for the swimming pool.
Just for the swim?
Like free swim and stuff like that. I'm just saying, like, there is.
I think there's several, actually.
Or there's random that do it, yeah. So maybe we approach one of them to see if there's, you know, in the value of five to ten thousand, if we can get that up too. It's just what I'm kind of thinking. But if there's no other comment, did you wanna have another comment?
So you'd like to, just so I'm clear, you'd like to approve the the increase by five thousand and then just make some inquiries and hope to replace that five thousand from the private sector?
Yeah, that's my thoughts.
So if we don't see that, then we're really just approving the five thousand dollar increase in the budget.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so if there's no other comments or questions, then I will ask, there's a motion on the table that Counselor Commander had made. Then I will ask all in favor. All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, that is that is declined. Why can I not think of that defeated? I did this the last meeting. That is defeated. Just like the Canucks, yeah. So now, Counselor Clark?
All right, I will make a motion to direct administration to bring a report to council with proposed changes to the criteria of the program for discussion and consideration.
I think it's because that we all are in favor of everything, so we never defeat anything. So it's like, what is that word that we don't do a lot of? Counselor Clark has put another motion forward. Any comment, question, debate on that motion? Counselor Sheriff?
I can add a comment as well. For the administration, if you bring this for discussion, could you maybe have a look at the repeat families that keep applying and the ones that keep getting denied? I know you're working on it right now, but maybe if we can set a limit, you know, well, like if you get qualified for two years, then you will be put on a backup list so other people can use it. If that could be also added to the application as an information piece, maybe?
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. I think that if, you know, a maximum lifetime per family of certain amount, I guess, is what you're kind of saying. Any other comment, question, or debate on the motion? Then I'll ask all in favor.
In favor.
All opposed? That is carried. Okay, well, thank you very much for that. Next up, we have nine point two, which is the Q1 financial report. I'm guessing this is Ms. Thompson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the quarter one report is always typically not very exciting because a lot of projects don't start till the second quarter or early into the third quarter, usually by the end of the second quarter. But let's walk through it. So if you go to the first page, at the top, you'll see that our property tax revenue section has an expense in it. It's a debit, and that's because we start paying, the requisitions that we pay out is netted against our revenue, and we start paying our requisitions before we start collecting taxes. You'll see that in the twelve million dollar credit range at the next quarter report. Franchise fees and other revenues, nothing crazy there. Franchise fee is a little higher than expected, but out of that. Sorry, did? Okay.
When we talk about franchise fees.
Yes.
Why the decrease?
Why the what, sorry? The decrease, is that what you said, Bill?
Yes, yes.
Why the decrease, okay.
There's not a decrease. The amount we collected to date is a little higher than we projected, but the reason why it's higher, part of the reason why it's higher is because, well, we can't accurately predict it, but also Adco has an agreement with us that says that out of their franchise fees, their property taxes will get paid out of, and that adjustment hasn't happened yet. So I want to say around the fifty-ish thousand dollars has to be adjusted out of the franchise fees and against their property tax revenue. So it looks like we've collected a little bit more than is actually franchise fees, if that makes sense. But we're.
I'm looking at twenty-two, which is one point four. I'm looking at twenty-twenty-three, which is one point three.
Yeah, that one year we overbudgeted. I typically just budget whatever they tell me in the fall. They tell me what they are budgeting, and that year just happened to be lower, but it bumped back up in 2024. So I can't remember exactly what the reason was in 2023, but typically I just budget for what they are. They send me a letter in the fall saying, we are thinking this is how much franchise fees we'll collect for you this next year. But twenty twenty-four was higher and the budget was higher. I'll look into that for you, Bill. I can't remember by heart or know if I got an explanation for it.
Okay, thank you.
When we go to general administration, nothing extraordinary there. The revenues are lower, but again, the first quarter, if we spread it evenly, the projected revenues, a less amount typically is collected in quarter one. For the big, big revenues, I'll go and I'll manually adjust the way the budget is allocated across the quarters, but for the smaller ones, it tends to be more time-consuming than what it's worth. So you'll see some of that under expenses. It's just quarter one, usually we don't have as much activity. We have a lot of projects that don't start. Under general administration is IT, HR, finance, all those departments. And yeah, a lot of the activities don't start till about this time of the year. Protective services for revenues, it's kind of what we thought it was gonna be for expenses. You'll see police is higher, but that's because we paid the first installment of the back pay. If council will remember, last year in the spring, I want to say, we got kind of the final verdict handed down to us, like, yeah, you're gonna have to pay the back pay. We kind of fought it, not we necessarily, but as a group of municipalities and AB munis had fought for, even FCM actually fought to have that not be handed down to us, but alas, it was. However, they gave us the option to pay it in two years. So we said, of course, yeah, let's keep the money in our account for as long as possible. So we made that first installment this year, but we do have that money set aside in reserve, so that will offset that expense there. And if you go on to transportation, everything is pretty much bang on there, very much as we would expect for the first quarter. Nothing to really note. For utilities, here we have revenues behind, but also expenses. So that just speaks to the busyness of quarter two compared to quarter one. So you'll just see the activity amp up in the summer, especially under waste. We see in the spring cleanup and summer, that's when you see your large amounts of revenues coming in, and of course, then the associated expenses as well, some of the expenses. Community services, the revenues actually are very, very close, within three thousand of what we would expect in quarter one. The expenses are just higher than we expected, but not significantly, which leaves our net expense very close to what we would expect for quarter one. You'll see for, let's say, like affordable housing, the revenue is low, but also the expenses. ECDC, the revenue is a little higher, and the expenses are also a little higher. So, but they net out to very much what we would expect, a little over budget there. For planning, the the education, the revenue, I believe, is just a reserve transfer that needs to come in, just hasn't happened yet. It'll happen when the associated expenses are being spent on the tuition. The expenses in education, we do have irregardless at this point of students because we do have an education coordinator, so we still have wages. But there are zero fee expenses coming in, but not necessarily, like, not all of that is what that is. There is some wages in there. Planning and act dev, both. For planning, the expenses are lower. We still have a vacancy for economic development with projects. The timing doesn't always follow the quarters or where we might, where a budget might look like it is, but it will happen more. Once the projects start getting completed, you'll have the expenses amping up. For parks and rec, we have, our revenues are over, like, we have more revenues than we expected. That is due to the pool and the omni-plex, actually. For the pool, it's just busy, you know, like, just a lot of activity happening. For the pool, it's just busy, you know, like, just a lot of activity happening. But for the omni-plex, quarter one tends to be higher than other quarters because of that final, the wrap-up of the, the hockey season compared to quarter two. So in quarter two, it might even out a little bit. On the expense side, the pool is higher than expected, that coincides with the revenue, but the others are either under budget, on budget or under, which means that our net expense at the bottom is quite significantly under budget at this moment. I'd expect that to equalize a little bit in the summer when the omni-plex is less busy. And that's it for. Oh, I guess I'll speak to the, the net. So the net, we see we're ahead by 338,000. And most of that is simply projects that haven't kicked off yet. So I'd expect, there's nothing that's happened in the first quarter that leads me to believe that will necessarily be under budget for the whole year. Like, we haven't seen perhaps like a ton of savings necessarily. It's just the timing of our expenses. If any questions on that part, I will take them now, and then we'll go on to the capital.
Any questions for Ms. Thompson? I do have a couple. So under planning and development.
Yeah.
Revenues for the actual in 2022, it's significantly higher. Can you remind me again, what, what was happening in 2022 that we see in such an increase? It's a good thing, but what was it?
I believe there was grants in 2022.
The 320,000?
Oh, no, that was the new school.
Oh, that was the school. Okay, that's what it was.
And then the economic development, we had a few grants, I believe.
Okay.
But under planning, yeah, was the 100 and I want to say almost 200,000 in permitting fees.
And education too, there was?
Education, we had sponsorships, metal necks, some other sponsorships.
Whitecap, all that. Okay, perfect. And then when we go to parks and recreation.
Yeah.
Under revenues, outdoor recreation for 2023, the actual 83,000. Why was there such a decrease there?
So that's largely because of how the rev, the cost share revenue was allocated. So in the past, we would, we would say, okay, so the, the county pays a million 46, let's say. Then I would take the expenses for all the areas that the revenue is applied to and just do as a percent basis. But then in 23, I decided to actually, the actual cost sharing agreement, it doesn't apply to all parks, whereas the expenses are all parks. So I decreased the amount of the county cost share that's being applied to parks, and it's just have more heavily applied to the other areas. So the, the revenue didn't actually decrease. It's just, it's in omni-plex MCC pool instead of an outdoor recreation.
So the expenses went up. So did you do it the same, like, to separate it?
No, the expenses are all ours, so.
Oh, so expenses are all ours?
In outdoor recreation, in, yes, we had in 2023, we, we hired a contractor, was it 2023, Shelley? Where we hired, oh, was it 2022, where we hired contractors because the summer students weren't able to keep the parks up? And so we had like an unbudgeted expense that was, well, it was by council motion to do that in 2022, I believe. So you see it going from 580 to 648 because of that level of service.
And then the 670, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then so I don't quite understand the outdoor recreation, how it's.
Revenue?
Yeah, or, yeah, revenue then, how it's.
Right, because so, let's say, outdoor recreation, its net at the bottom is 10%.
Yeah.
I would have previously, 10% of all recreation.
Yeah.
I would have previously allocated 10% of Brazza County's revenue against there. However, only 2% of that 10% is actually being cost shared. Not all the parks are being cost shared by the county, only a couple of parks. So it was not accurate to apply that much revenue to outdoor recreation. It incorrectly showed what our actual true expenditures were, because actually, the county's only cost sharing on 56,000 of the expenses, which is maybe like 2% of all, so now only 2%, let's see, I don't know the exact number is being applied there, because that's a more accurate representation of what they're actually cost sharing.
Okay, so in 2021, it was 352, so that was including the county, everything, and then we kind of, I guess, started correcting in 2022, and then.
Yeah.
Completely in 2023 is kind of what you're saying?
Yeah, and there's, there are some other revenues as well as county, but that's the change from 21 to 22. There is other, sometimes there's grants in outdoor recreation, sometimes there's donations for park or memorial benches and all that kind of stuff. So there's other revenues, but that's the big change, yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions? No?
Awesome. All right, let's move on to capital, and this is even more unexciting, because we really haven't really kicked off on many things yet. But first up is the common services mobile equipment. So you have the two sweepers, Sanders, two Sanders that were budgeted in 2024 that were already purchased. And actually, the, the combination of those two, the budget was 75,000, and, and Shelley shopped around, Shelley and her team shopped around and actually got both of them for 62,000. So that's really good news. They got some savings on both Sanders. And then.
Shelley.
Yeah. Since then, though, like, as of March 31st, we only had those two, but since then, we've also purchased the sweeper that was budgeted in 2023. So that budget rolled into 2024 because it wasn't completed. So yeah, that's, that's that one. And then we had just some minor, like, engineering costs for 50th, as we prepare for this year, for this coming up season. As same as water distribution, you had some consulting and engineering legal costs to try to get that project kicked off. And the wastewater treatment augmentation, just some consulting, engineering costs as well. And then the CCAN. I believe the remainder, the whole thing is purchased now. That was just the down payment. But that's all that happened in quarter one for capital. So as of March 31st, we only spent 88,000. But as of the report, the day I did the report, which was late last week, we had spent up to 415,000. So some of the projects are starting to roll off now, which is really good news. It'll be a busy quarter two. Any questions on capital?
Thank you very much for that. Deputy Clark?
Yeah, so where did these, where did the Sanders sit in here?
In the Sanders, in that very first project.
Yeah, common service, okay. So, oh, can I just quickly just ask, so a lot of these projects haven't been completed. Are we going to see the majority, if not all, completed? Are we hopeful this year?
I know that there is movement on the snow dump, so that one, that one's been carried. The fire training facility is one we need to talk about. I'm not 100% sure where that's at. I know we kind of got stalled there because the location fell through and stuff, and so that one, we need to talk about whether we need to just cancel it or if it is going to go ahead. I, yeah, so that one is in question. The repurpose, I believe that there is movement on that. I would get Hans to answer that if anyone has more specific questions on that. And then the lagoon, so 307, that one is going to be next year, right, Shelley? That one was, we started the project, but the deadline was until 2026, so that it's just waiting there till we have to get it done in 2026.
Okay, so Shelley's saying it needs to go with the wastewater upgrades.
Project 307.
Project will be pushed to 20, 2025 starts.
The fire pumper, I believe, is set to arrive next year. That one's been ordered. So that one was one that was carried. The landfill expansion, that was money that was allocated to the project when we initially, we knew there had to be some expansion, and the plan was to perhaps purchase a plot of land. We later, that was going to be too expensive, and we re-scoped and focused on removing pipelines and stuff on the other plot of land that would allow for expansion. So that's there to do like studies and all that kind of stuff to potentially expand the landfill. So that is being used up as time goes on. Servers new, Marat Pond expansion, so this one will likely stay till next year, and we'll come back to council to actually bring a completed project request forward. CETC cameras and furnishings, those ones, we have to talk to Kundi and see if the plan is still in place for that, because the manager that brought those forward is no longer here. So just need to make sure that that's still the vision for CETC. So I'd have to consult with Wally and Kundi on that. Security cameras actually are going in, I think, this month. Security cameras? So yeah, so security cameras are coming right away. The scoreboard. Sorry.
Yeah, we do have project status sheets on all these that were in the last council meeting, and so our next council meeting, there'll be updated project status sheets that will reflect some of these changes.
Yeah, sure. Yes.
Unless there's a specific question about, about, you know, one or two, I, you know, I think you've covered.
Yeah. The biggest ones like that, yeah, that I highlighted were ones kind of that we weren't sure, but yeah, most of them are looking to be finished this year, or at least started this year. So the only one was scoreboard, which is also this year. So yeah. Augmentation and CCAN containers are in, in process.
Okay, Counselor Evans?
The wastewater treatment augmentation, that's the Sagar system. And, and are we done testing there? Is, and it all looks good, and we're going to go ahead and put one in? And, and that's going to happen this year? They're going to start on that? Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So 80% detailed design drawings will be done this year is what Shelley had said. Any other questions? Nope. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Counselor Clark?
Yeah. Page 26.
I will make a motion that council accept the Q1 financial report per AAR 24134 as information.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Then I'll ask all in favor.
In favor.
Thank you very much. That is carried, and we will break for 10 minutes. Okay, we will reconvene our meeting back at 10:15 a.m. Counselor Ballas, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. We'll move to our next decision item, which is 9.3, the appointment of clerk to local assessment review board. Well, good morning. It's nice to see you in that seat, Tom, Mr. Tweedle. Nice to have you here.
The Town of Drayton Valley Assessment Review Board Bylaw 2010 O2B and the subsequent amending by law 2013 11B establish a local assessment review board and composite assessment review board as part 11 of the Municipal Government Act. Section 456.1 of the MGA requires that council appoint a designated officer to act as the clerk of the assessment review boards, having jurisdiction of municipality, and prescribe the remuneration of that person, and ensure the clerk is not the assessor. For appointments to occur, the appointees must have valid training through the Land and Property Rights Tribunal. Administration is recommending that appointment of me as the assessment review board clerk, and my training is effective until 2027. Yeah, I have, and I believe Monica is appointed right now. Is that correct? Yeah, mine's good till 2027. Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, my mic's not on. Sorry. Sorry, Bill. So again, that's really exciting that you took the training, because I know it was a fantastic, really, really, like, yeah. Really stimulating course, a really long course. Any questions for Mr. Tweedle this morning? Counselor McGee?
What I do would like to say, welcome to the chambers. I know it can be a little bit daunting to some, at some times, but we're a pretty relaxed group, and we, we're glad you're part of our team, and we appreciate the things that you do. You've taken the course. Good on you.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Very well said, Tom. Thank you very much for that. Is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion? Counselor Kamana?
Thank you. It's my pleasure to make a motion that council appoints Mr. Connor Tweedle as assessment review board clerk as per AR 24. One way to the assessment review boards for three-year term expiring March 22, 2027. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that motion. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Go ahead, Counselor Clark.
So in the past, it's been councillors on there. I'm just curious as to, like, has this always been the case?
Yeah.
There can be anybody in your organization?
Yeah, I believe one clerk has to be in the municipality, and one has to be a councillor.
Yeah.
So we're not getting out of it?
No.
No.
So yeah, there will be a reappointment. There will be a reappointment of councillors. So yeah, you guys will have to figure out who is going to be sitting on that board. We wish Connor the best of luck. I know that when I, right after I took my training, I think it was Counselor Ballas that had taken his before me and said that when he sat on it, there was, there was nothing that came forward. And as soon as I had taken my training, El Vera had let me know that I had three coming up, so I was super excited, because I said to Bill, woo-hoo, I got three, but they settled and I got nothing. So it, it's great if you can see some action on this board, but we'll wait to see what the end of the year brings. So there is a motion on the table, and I'll call it all in favor.
In favor.
And that is carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Tweedle. Next up, we have 9.4, which is the Northwest Alberta Emergency Resource Agreement. Mr. Cody Rossing. Good morning, welcome.
So my first presentation today is regarding the Northwest Alberta Emergency Resource Agreement. I'm just going to call it the agreement going forward. So it's made an agreement for Alberta Task Force and the Northwest All Hazards Incident Management Team for the Northwest region of Alberta. In addition, it's mutual aid agreement for the fire and other municipal resources for various emergencies that could occur. The agreement emphasizes incidents involving fire, but has been used to access public works assistance in emergencies and emergency management staff assistance. It does not supersede any existing mutual aid agreements. This agreement serves as conduit and overarching agreement for the Northwest All Hazardous Incident Management Team, allowing members to access support and provides the town more access to equipment and personnel. There is no formal boundary for the agreement, even though it is considered Northwest Alberta. In discussions with the Alberta Emergency Management Agency and the Northwest Alberta Emergency Resource Agreement holder, AEMA does not have any concerns with the expansion of the agreement. Presently, there's 35 municipalities that are part of this agreement, including but not limited to the town of Whitecourt, Loxine and County, the town of Edson, Big Lakes County, town of High Level, city of Grand Prairie, and the MD of Greenview, to name a few. The agreement's been used a couple of times since it kind of came in force about nine-ish years ago. Fox Creek, High Level, McKenzie County, Heinz Creek have all used it so far. So if the, if council decides to join the agreement, it will enable the town to have greater access to equipment and personnel to assist during a large disaster or emergency. It does not only cover for fire protecting assistance, but is also meant to be utilized for other municipal equipment. So for example, if we had a big ice storm and had a bunch of stuff freeze up, we could use this agreement to gather graders or something like that from another municipality. And also includes personnel such as for emergency social supports, ESS, and the Emergency Coordination Center as examples. So. It would provide the town with additional resource in our time of need, but it is also a reciprocal agreement. So if we're called upon, we could support other parties supplying. What we can to assist in their time of need. So it does benefit us by creating an access to a larger pool of municipal assets during large sustained events. When we were looking at this, we will be the most kind of southern municipality so far that's part of this agreement. Part of my research is there's no other kind of larger scale, if you want to call it that, agreements in Alberta that I've found so far. I'm gonna continue looking for that, but. If there isn't, there is also the opportunity that administration might be able to take a lead and kind of create like a central Alberta. Agreement along those lines, if if that's kind of where where we're desirous in the future, but. One benefit with this is often you see with memorandums of understandments or agreements or mutual aid agreements is usually it's between municipality A and municipality B. That's it. And then you end up having to have, in this case, we would have thirty five different agreements in place just to access these resources. With this one large overarching agreement. We would have access to thirty five different municipalities just as part of this one agreement. So luckily, it hasn't had to be used too many times. But as we kind of seen last year, often resources can get scarce, so this does provide an ability that. Pricing is already kind of set and renegotiated prior to, so it's not sitting there on the phone trying to figure out how much it's all gonna cost and all that kind of stuff. So. To join it, there's no financial implications. If we do deploy out to another organization to assist. Like I mentioned, there's already set set prices in there that they would pay the municipality for us going, vice versa, if we needed them to provide us assistance. Pricing is set so that we know. Um, there's no anticipated legal implications by joining the agreement or any organizational service level implications. So. The next step is that if council authorizes the town to enter into the agreement, administration will will provide a letter to the president of the. Agreement holder, I guess, and then the town becomes a member. So it's pretty, pretty simple process if approved and then we get included on there. So. The recommendation from administration to council is that council authorize Drayton Valley to enter into the agreement as outlined.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for administration? Councillor Evans?
Thank you, Cody. So. Looking at this, it 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 looks, uh, it looks like a great initiative. One of the difficult things is. Is. Getting all those mutual aid agreements in place for your neighboring municipalities, updating them every year, et cetera, et cetera. But I guess my 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 question is this, so. Uh, do we still have mutual aid agreements? Outside of this with our neighboring municipalities, as has been kind of the 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 norm? And will this then replace all those or we will have? Sort of two sets of agreements?
Yeah. So currently, a lot of our agreements pertain to just fire related items, right? Like Brazos County, Drayton Valley Fire Service. Has agreements with, say, Parkland County kind of thing, right? But that is just for fire related stuff. When it comes to emergency management specific kind of additional support. There are some agreements that the town was a part of previously that they've either expired or for different reasons have been cancelled or anything like that. So. To my knowledge, we don't have any kind of existing emergency management related agreements with any kind of regional. However, they have it right in this agreement here that, say, we have an agreement with Brazos County. Other organizations closer by, those agreements come first. This would be kind of that second layer kind of thing, so.
Okay, so no, no, that'll avoid any confusion as far as if the if the rates are a little bit different in one or the other. Those those original individual agreements will will kind of be.
Take precedence. Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Councillor Ballas, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. I guess the only question I have is is who's authorized to put this plan into place? If if you require assistance, is it the town C A O? Is it the fire chief? Who does it?
So how the agreement is kind of worded is it talks about designated officers. Part of the appendix is is kind of making making that determination on who is that authorized person kind of thing, right? So how I would foresee it is it would be more of the C A O. However, if the C A O designates it down to director of emergency management, deputy directors, et cetera. Then it would kind of open up a little bit more on who's actually allowed. What we don't want is anyone in the organization just calling up and all of a sudden we've got. Ten graders in town when we didn't need them and now we're paying all these rates, right? So.
So would that be in your agreement or contract or policy or what do you determine?
Yeah, so in in the actual agreement, it does have. Like the C A O is responsible, but they do have a contact list that you need to provide them through the agreement on who those designated officers are. So. If if council is desirous of joining this agreement, then we'll send a letter saying this is the motion, we're part of the the agreement now kind of thing. And then part of that, we'll send them whoever the designated people are gonna be for the town of Drayton Valley.
Did you have any further questions, Bill?
No, thank you.
Okay, councillor McGee, Mr Ferris, did you want to add something to? Okay, councillor McGee?
Thanks, Cody. I was thinking about mutual aid and even the oil and gas sector, we have lots of that on going on. Does this connect with that?
This this specific agreement is just for other municipalities that are part of it, kind of that bigger picture. El Vera and I are kind of looking at what other industries can we start engaging with? To kind of, is there agreements that we should be putting in place with them or not to be determined kind of thing? But this specific agreement is just for municipalities.
We also had discussion with the Otis and the Vance in in the north. Or in west of us that are talking about mutual aid and fires. It it would seem to me that we somehow we need to make sure all of that's connected. It just, if that was the issue, it says that there's these guys and these guys and these guys, who are you gonna call?
Yeah, well, I think a lot of, a lot of it comes down to existing agreements are mainly just that fire right now, right? So having that a little bit higher level thought of not just fire, right? There's all all hazards that could be involved. So how can we get it supports in those other areas, right? So kind of like I was mentioning a little bit earlier, so far from kind of that larger scale. This is the only larger scale agreement that I can find for Alberta, but. It might be an opportunity where where Drayton Valley kind of takes the lead and creates that central Alberta agreement and then start getting a little bit more regional and see how far we can expand out. And part of that is, and I don't know if there's any legality issues with First Nations due to different levels of government that play into that, but that's different things that we could explore as part of that. Okay, thank you.
So do you think that we could forward this then on to Otis in Brazos County or is that too, are we getting ahead of ourselves?
Yeah, I think this this agreement is for the the northern, the northern portion of the province. And Otis does have mutual aid agreements with with Rocky.
Okay.
They're they're much closer than than we are. So that's kind of where that would stay and as. And Cody indicated earlier that, you know, maybe in time, if if resources allow and and there's interest from other jurisdictions and and government agencies around us. We can, we can expand or do a similar type of agreement for central Alberta. I do know that in some parts of central Alberta, there's, there's already. A joint emergency response plans. So so that is, that is well in place. This just. Gives us the availability to acquire more resources or help our neighbors to the north.
Okay, thank you for that. I apologize if you already covered this. I was reading, so maybe you had mentioned this. So if we are called upon and we support other parties in supplying. Resources and then we ourselves are, you know, becoming a state of an emergency. How easy is it to now recall those, you know, resources back?
Yeah, so they they have provisions right in the agreement where. Should something like that happen, there's there's no issues, you can just.
You can just recall it back immediately.
I I think when they created that, they understood that if if we're gonna help someone and our own house is all of a sudden in trouble.
Like last year was a prime example, right? Yeah. Okay, councillor Evans, did you have another question or would you like to make a motion? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I I again, just a comment first. I I I think anytime that you can, you can establish those those resources as available at a set cost. You do it. You know, some of these places are pretty far away, but you know. They they will send people to assist and and I'm all for us sending people to assist as well if if one of these other communities. Ends up in a spot like we were. Yeah, so I think it's a, I I think it's a great idea. So with that, I'll make the, I'll make the motion that council. Authorize the town of Drayton Valley to enter into the Northwest Alberta Emergency Resource Agreement as outlined in A I R dash twenty four dash one twenty three.
Thank you very much for your motion. Any comment, question or debate on the motion? I'll just add that I think this is very proactive of us considering everything we were through, like I had mentioned last year. I think this helps us. Better understand or get prepared for emergency like we've had in the past to help other areas as well as that being reciprocated back to us. So I think it's a, it's a great agreement to have in place. Thank you very much, councillor Evans, for making that motion. I will now call the motion all in favor.
In favor.
Thank you, Bill. That is carried. Thank you very much, Cody. I assume you're doing nine point five as well, post traumatic stress disorder coverage for community. Peace officers under the Workers' Compensation Act, May twenty twenty four update.
Yes, absolutely. So as council may recall, back on January eleventh, twenty twenty three, I was in front of everyone in here. To talk about how community peace officers are not covered for presumptive P T S D coverage under the Workers' Compensation Act. At the time, council directed administration to submit a resolution package to Alberta municipalities advocating to change the legislation to include community peace officers. So part of submitting the resolution to Alberta municipalities is we were required to obtain a secondary municipality. Through that, we were able to get the city of Edmonton, who's the second largest municipal employer of community peace officers in the province, to second the motion. Subsequently, we did forward the motion to Alberta municipalities. Councillor Clark was able to present in September twenty twenty three to. To the motion and it was approved and it was went through successfully. So since that time, Alberta municipality sent a letter to the Honorable Matt Jones, who's Minister of Jobs, Economy and Trade with Government of Alberta. Part of his portfolio oversees the workers' compensation legislation. Alberta municipalities received a response from the minister. Long and short was. There is coverage for peace officers as defined in the act to use the title of sheriff. Thank you for the information. We'll take it into consideration, but we're not looking at changing the legislation at this time. So. It's on their radar, but they're not really doing anything with it, I guess, with it. So. With that, Alberta municipalities receive the response, their healthy communities committee. Obviously, it wasn't, the the motion wasn't met as it was intended. So they met last month. They haven't got an update from them yet on that. To determine their next next steps for advocacy on the issue, whether that be collaborating with the Alberta Association of Community Peace Officers on advocacy or finding out. When the government might review the act next. So. As there's no immediate plans for the province to amend their legislation to provide the presumptive presumptive P T S D coverage to community peace officers. Under the Workers' Compensation Act. Administration is recommending that Drayton Valley continue to advocate for this change, including expressing concerns to the Minister. Of Jobs, Economy and Trade, which is Matt Jones, and the Minister of Public Safety and Emergency Management, which is Mike Ellis. While requesting reconsideration and inviting them to me to discuss their concerns further. Subject to, I think that's the end of my presentation. If anyone has any questions.
Well, thank you very much for that and thank you to councillor Clark for taking this to Alberta munis. You did a great job presenting there during the resolutions. And it's unfortunate we just get a letter back always like we get a letter back with a response like this. So I'll open it up for any questions. Councillor Clark?
Can Alberta council help us with this one?
Put it on the list, absolutely, I think, right? If there's an appetite.
Let them, let them do the legwork and.
Seeing several nods around the table to go ahead and put this on. With Alberta council to see if we can get a little bit more movement. Sometimes we always question, we go to Alberta munis and the role that Alberta munis plays in the resolutions that are passed at the conference. They then, you know, turn and start advocating towards the provincial government and a lot of times not much happens, right? They're just resolutions that are made and there's a lot of support behind them from the municipalities, but then not much changes. And it's unfortunate when you have places like R M A and Alberta munis that are supposed to be the voice for the municipalities and. Counties and that, but we don't see movement. So I think that on issues like this and many other that we just keep pushing and hopefully we'll see change come, right? Uh, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion with? Uh, which would include to. What councillor Clark said?
Yes, I can do that. I move that council accepts the P T S coverage for C P Os under the Worker Compensation Act, May twenty twenty four update. In A I R twenty four one oh six as information and that council directs the mayor to send an open letter. Do we want, yeah. Do that one too, to the Minister of Jobs, Economy and Trade and the Minister of Public Safety and Emergency Services. With concerns of the response and request reconsideration and invitation to me to discuss further and further engage Alberta council to. Pick up this file and work with administration to. Work through the issue.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that, councillor Clark. Councillor Ballas, do you have question, comment, debate?
Again, again.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just wondering. If we should ask Alberta munis to send a letter. Seeing as the resolution went through them and to give their support, which means that it's the support of all municipalities. Versus just ourselves.
Thank you very much for that, councillor Ballas. I'm just wondering if Alberta munis didn't send the letter because. When you look at what's included in our package, there is a response coming back from Jobs, Economy and Trade to Mr Tyler Gandam. So are you requesting that we ask Alberta munis to send another one, another letter, Bill?
I I don't know if they did send a letter initially. I haven't seen that.
Yeah, I I didn't receive a copy of whatever Alberta municipalities did send to the minister, but we did. On the December eighteenth, Mr Gandam did receive a letter from the Minister of Jobs, Economy and Trade with a response. Regarding the motion that was put forward. So I, like I said, I don't know exactly what Alberta municipality sent to them. What I can say though is I I haven't heard the update since. Alberta municipalities healthy communities committee was meeting last month to kind of discuss their next steps, but. I think this is one of those things where multiple people can kind of be going at different angles kind of thing, right? So.
Yeah, it it says at the beginning, Bill, it says at the beginning of the letter, thank you for your October thirtieth, twenty twenty three letter regarding your request for a review and response to three of the organization's twenty twenty three resolutions. So that letter was sent on October thirtieth, twenty twenty three. I'm not sure how we could obtain a copy of the letter. Would we have received this information in one of our packages back in October?
Um, I've never received it. I can, I can reach out to them to see. What it is.
Sure. So are you okay, Bill, if we reach out, see what that letter stated and then decide if we want to send another one?
Just one other thing, is it R M A involved as well? Did they pass the resolution?
Uh, the resolution that was brought forward only went to Alberta municipalities, but if council's direction is to submit a resolution to R M A as well, then that's something that. We could facilitate.
We could add it to our joint council bill if you'd like.
Well, the more support you get, the better offered one of these.
Agree. Did you want to add it to our joint council meeting and see if one of the county councillors would take it to R M A as a resolution?
Sure. Sure, I'm not sure, Cody, if they were even asked.
Did you make a request to County Council?
No, we didn't bring anything forward to County Council. Part of the discussions when we were kind of looking for that seconders. We wanted, we were hoping that if we had a larger organization, they had a little bit more teeth. So when we we approached City of Calgary, who was also in support of it, and the city of Edmonton, and Edmonton came back, kind of first one that was said yes to it. So yeah, unfortunately, or good and bad, I guess, is good. We got a large municipality to kind of second us. But through that, we didn't kind of collaborate with our our local other other organizations to spearhead this.
I've jotted it down, Bill, for our joint council meeting. Did you have any other questions, comments, or debate? No, I'm just asking, Bill. All good, Bill?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Counsel Kamana?
Just a simple question, I guess. So when we craft the letter and send it to the minister, usually do we C C A M Alberta munis as well?
Yeah, that would be kind of my my thought is they're already advocating for it. So if we're kind of continuing, they should also be kept in the loop. I guess part of it as well is back when we were getting this together, we did have a number of other organizations that were willing to provide letters of support. So if this is the direction that council is going and kind of furthering advocating for this, I can definitely reach out to those people as well. And once once our letter is crafted, we could always share that with them as well.
Okay, perfect. If there's no further comment, question, debate, there is a motion on the table, and I'll ask all in favor. Bill?
In favor.
That is carried. Thank you very much. And that is it for our decision items. Well, considering all the motions we made, we did good time today. So next up is ten point one, council initiated items. Intersection banner discussion, Fiftieth Street and Fifty First Avenue. So I had put this on here for discussion at my midsize mayor's caucus meeting. We were just talking with some of the other mayors and municipalities with graduation coming up. It just it reminded me, I think it's Pinoka. Pinoka, what they do is they put banners up. Remember how we used to have the cloth banners around town on our light poles and things like that? And then not sure if it was this council or the council before talked about, rather than replacing them with fabric, maybe going metal and and things like that. I think that'll come for a bit of a further discussion with Mr. Ferris this afternoon. But in talking with mayors of other municipalities, they say that they put banners up on Veterans Day and graduates and things like that. So when it's graduation, they put a picture of the graduate with the year, and they put them all up over town. Then after you take them down and you give them to the graduate. And I thought that's a fantastic day to really or fantastic way to really engage the community and just kind of give a shout out and things like that. But I thought, you know, that might be for consideration to come to council. But then I also thought on Fiftieth, where we have those big metal lovely things that are there, and we can put the the banner in like we had the Merry Christmas one. Maybe it's even there. We start small and do, you know, congratulations grads, Veteran Day. Maybe we pick a couple and and put them up there and then maybe expand that going forward, like to add as a budget item or for budget discussion coming up this year. And then maybe kind of grow on that. Just wanted to kind of see what council thought about that. Counsel Evans?
Yeah, I in 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 theory, it's it sounds like a great idea. I I think if we get the opportunity to acknowledge those couple of groups. Yeah, I think it'd be it'd be fine. I'd be all for looking at it at at budget time if we can get some costs associated with that. Yeah, seems like a nice initiative.
Counsel McGee?
Didn't we attempt to do that with the grads in the last vote and something wasn't quite right?
Well, I think we put all the names on our electronic sign, did we not, Ms. Stone? We had been. Oh, so that came as a request. Was that it during COVID that we could post the names? Okay, so that that happened. But I do remember there being a banner discussion, too.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the if it was just at the at this level and then the administration sort of did a a cost estimate and it seemed like it was and then trying to coordinate it. It was we were running late. I don't know if we're late now. We're, you know, into May and June. I don't know if that's late. But it's a good idea. I like it. I think it's a it's a celebration of our of our youth. And graduates, I think it's great. Budget is key.
Yeah. Not sure how much some banners would cost. I don't imagine they would be a lot. I don't know, Shelley, if you know what our Christmas banner was off the top of your head roughly or six hundred dollars? That was the big one. Yeah. Yeah, I was thinking the big ones, you know, like where on Fiftieth, the big metal where we put there? About eight hundred? Okay, okay.
And as the C A O is fond of mentioning, nothing is free. So there's a cost.
Thanks for reminding us, Tom. So if we maybe bring it back for budget discussions or in July there, start having them. There's an appetite? Okay. Do we need a motion or just bring it?
That would certainly help, I think. You know, the scope of of what you're what you're asking will need a little bit of clarity. So are you are you looking at just the the one banner on that structure to say congratulations graduates? Or are you looking to do all of the students' banners for for the budget request for twenty five?
Well, maybe what we do is maybe we just start with congratulations graduates, Veterans Day or this. And then maybe what we do is open it up for, I mean, we'd have a year to plan for next year, and it would be sponsors, right? So maybe some of the businesses could sponsor a student, and then we would work towards that perhaps. I can ask, and I think it was through sponsorships that Pinoka did it, too. Like for the for the graduates, and then when they graduated, they took them down and gave them to the students.
I I'm not quite sure of the size of our high school graduating class, but if that's a couple hundred students, then then there's probably significant costs there. I would expect that sponsorship, you know, people will be able to get at least some of it sponsored, but the remainder of it would probably fall to the town. And there would comes from McGee's point, there would be an increased operating cost if that's going to be an annual thing. So lift plus the hardware and the brackets for the banner, the the banner. So we we'll cost that out and bring it back to to council for budget for the for twenty twenty five. If if that's what you want, we'll come up with a couple of different options. We can look at individual banners, what they cost, and just do some simple math on it. So you have that that information. And just a simple congratulation banner up on that, we can we can we'll cost that out as well. So you'll have a couple of different options.
Thank you very much for that, Counselor Evans. Did you have something to add?
Yeah, just yeah, trying to have a little clarity for myself as well. So they give each student a small banner?
Yeah, so I didn't get all the details, but they get sponsors to sponsor each student, and then a banner goes up with the graduating year and their picture, and they put them up how we used to have like those cloth banners throughout the community. They put them all up for the month of, you know, prior to graduation. And once graduation's over, they take them down, and then the students get them. So I it just I kind of thought that could probably get costly, and we could have a lot of students, but we do have those big metal ornaments on Fiftieth there, and we could just do something simple there and put banners, right, as well, just to.
Yeah, I I think I'd be supportive of that, like an individual banner. Yeah, I I don't know. It's got to be a couple of hundred or anyway, I would think.
I don't know.
But but I, yeah, I'd be all for putting up a maybe get two banners, one one with the congratulations message, and then another one with the year or something that we can just change every year.
Oh, that's a good idea.
But yeah, I I think it'd be great to acknowledge. That's a that's a big
I like that, too.
Big step in those students' lives. Nothing wrong with that. And the veterans.
They certainly did veterans, too. So I wasn't sure. I just wanted to throw it out. It's not to say that we have to, but maybe there's another holiday or another celebration that we want to. Maybe it's, what do we have so far? Do we just have Merry Christmas? Yeah, so maybe it's Canada Day. Maybe it's you know, Happy Birthday Drayton Valley, right? The day we were incorporated or something, right? Or when the Oilers win the cup. So that might be expedited. That was Counselor Clark's suggestion. Go Oilers. Okay, so we'll bring it back. I don't think it's a big, I'm not looking at a big report coming or, I guess, a big cost. I just thought it was a great, I thought it was a great idea. So I thought I'd throw it by council and see, right? Another way to celebrate or something. Keep it simple. Okay, so looking for a motion from a councillor to for administration to bring that information forward. Thank you. Thank you very much, Counselor McGee. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? And I'll ask all in favor. Thank you, Bill. That is carried. No other council initiated items. Next up, we have department reports. First up is Community and Recreation Services Department Report. Mr. Hans Von Klaveren. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and through to the rest of council. So basically, a couple of items again in our department report for the Community and Recreation Services. So for ECDC, we just recently had Mother's Day, of course, and it was a successful event again where not only there's extra attention to the mothers, but also the raffle that they do to get extra funding for the slide they will put in the backyard or the swing set. So what they raised was a little bit over north of six hundred dollars. On Friday, this coming Friday, there's the ECDC or E C E, I should say, the Early Childhood Educators Day of Recognition in the province. So please drop in. Everybody is invited. We invite council absolutely to drop in and appreciate and come out and shake hands with our staff over there and appreciate them in the timeframe that's there. This timeframe is mentioned in the report here. Just make sure that the kids are awake and there's, let's say, a little bit more fun to be there. The FCSS Seniors Week is coming up, June third to ninth. On the fifth, there's always a big event. It's a great event at the Legion where the opportunity is to mingle with our seniors, to see the services that are provided by certain organizations, but to really appreciate our seniors that have contributed to our community and are still great ambassadors for our local town. The Omniplex, it's very busy. We've seen, of course, the big events that we have in the springtime. Multiple events happening in the same weekend, but very successful rodeo, for instance. The score clock that is basically in between being installed. It is a little back and forth with the planning with our installer, but we are doing that as we speak. The sound system will be assessed as well, and that might be a upgrade that we can manage at this moment, but also gives us ideas about what the future upgrade could be for this sound system. The Oil Corp, the Ricochet Oil Corp Aquatic Center, it's still ongoing. It's very busy. We are getting ready for our our events in the summer as well and making sure that we have enough staffing in there. For community services, we reported earlier on it as well, but here you see again, eight people received that were living unsheltered. For the month of April, shelter in our local, let's say, short rental opportunities. We are working still with those people that were temporarily sheltered with this grant to see what the long term outcome is, of course, because that's where you are aiming for, and we support them with other resources necessary to have a long lasting result. Yesterday, we had the, and it's not in there, we had the Community Club and Meet and Greet. That was in the Oil Tap House. That was organized by the Drayton Valley Tourism and Hospitality Association. It was a success connecting with that organization, the Drayton Valley Community Foundation as well, like other organizations. So it was a good mingle. One big item in there was the promotion again to our recreation organizations to utilize the Drayton Events website. And if you take a look already right now, you see that this free advertising that provides the opportunity for people to find events and what to do in town pretty easily. But it has already more than sixty events right now on it. So it's growing, and it's been seen as a success, and it was good to share that again with all the groups to use that as free advertising space. And in our facilities, ongoing maintenance and our little projects that are needed to happen over there with our three men crew are still ongoing. If there's any questions, feel free to ask.
Well, thank you very much for your report. Any questions this morning for Hans? Counsel McGee?
Just I was watching Global, which is not unusual, but the brute group were were cited on on Global, and so they were there sort of presenting what's happening in Drayton Valley around their marathon or the ten kilometer thing that they're doing. It's it sounded pretty exciting as well, and I think that's been pretty successful, right?
Yes, thank you for that question. So that's the gold brute, black gold brute obstacle course race. They organized organized it this year for the second time. It was successful last year. They grow on it. So they have more obstacles again. It's around the Omniplex area and through Ivantow Park. I think it's eight, yeah, June eighth. It's happening again. It's successful. It's it's great. He's looking to expand it maybe to other communities as well, because it's really something that's very solid as an organization, but to bring it to other communities is a little bit extra. But for us, local community where he's from, it's very nice to have this additional event. So June eighth, the Gold Root Obstacle Course Race.
Right. And I didn't get down to the rodeo, but highly successful means acting dance and Lions Club and all of that.
Thank you for that question. Yes, correct. So a sold out event. So multiple moments in that weekend were sold out, and the ball was done very well. So really well attended. When you take a look into the hundreds of people that come out for this event, it's great to have this. Since last year, of course, it had to be postponed or canceled even, but it was a great event to happen this year.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments or any other questions, Mr. Von Klaveren? Just a comment. Nancy, could you send a calendar invite out, please, to everyone for Friday? May seventeenth for ECDC Appreciation Day, please, as well as Seniors Week? Did that go out? Yes. Okay. And then June twentieth is Safe Talk. That's for community members. Is that correct, Hans? Alberta Health Services?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, just kind of going through all the events here. Okay, well, thank you very much for your report. Oh, I do have a question for you. I'm sorry. Before you slip away, artificial turf at Omniplex. Where are we with that and what are we doing?
Thank you for that question and through you to the rest of council as well. So we had one potential buyer lined up. We haven't solidified that sale of the artificial turf because basically it seems to be more advantageous to recoup the monies that we had spent on this because our additional operational cost would be, let's say, let's say, not so successful. So we are looking into having that option still. So I can follow up and see where we are, but it was not solidified yet as a sale.
Okay, so it is for sale.
Correct.
And then also with our old swimming pool, where are we at with that? I've had residents asking. I know I kind of forgot where we were at. We've done an assessment, and then were we doing community engagement or what were we planning on for the next steps?
Thank you for that. So with the assessment, of course, the building is sitting, let's say, idle at the moment. The only partner that we talked with so far was, of course, the The only partner that we talked with so far was, of course, the library, so that was the reach out from the library to ourselves. We have not done, reached out to the community for the ideas of assessment, because we know this is a budgetary big item. So basically, at the moment, we have it as a opportunity there in the background, but not actively sent out to community groups. Some groups have reached out to us initially, but has not gone any further than that. So what we are looking to is making sure that we have it as the additional source on our list. There's other locations as well as additional sources for our, let's say, assets, to bring that to council for the next budget period to see what that could look like. So at the moment, there's no specific development plans yet on it, so it's still part of our asset surplus.
Okay, so I guess those discussions will come up during budget to decide whether we want to put, I guess, an RFP out or what we want to do. If there was groups or organizations interested, do we have to get the building to a specific or certain state before we could do that? Or would we be looking at the user group or, I guess, intention of the building, that reclamation or retrofitting to fall on them?
Yeah, so basically, the biggest thing is it will fall on the potential use. Yeah, because there's really a huge difference between utilization as a, let's say, what we call the shell, the storage, versus habitation for, let's say, material or even utilizing this office space or human habitation. So there's a big difference between a building like that to be retrofitted towards potential use.
So I just tried to understand, so if there, if there was a user group, if we put RFP out and there was several user groups interested, would there still be a cost to the municipality then? I guess, before we could go ahead with that?
It would depend on, thank you, Madam Mayor, that would depend on on the user group and their financial situation. Now, I'm not too clear on this, but I thought there might have been a structural assessment of that facility done, so I think the facility is okay, but the cost for somebody to or an organization to use it will be substantial. So a community organization, unless they have the funding to take care of that, that cost will fall to the town. But did we do a structural assessment before I got here, sir?
So we did a preliminary assessment on the building, so the building is, let's say, structural utilization for, let's say, multiple uses for the future. So that means that the building can be utilized, so we could review, of course, potential usage. To get it into a shape for that specific use will be absolutely part of the proposal of the group, because it has a big difference, of course. Right now, we could, let's say, between brackets, turn over a building to another user group, but it will have big consequences to what type of usage the group will have.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you very much. Sorry for all the questions. It just, I had them in my notes and I thought, oh. Oh, sorry, go ahead. Counselor Clark just has a question.
Sorry, just really quickly, I saw the mud jack sidewalks of the CTC there. I just wanted to caution against using mud. My experience is that you're injecting moisture. Inevitably, moisture stays there and it's gonna heat and such in the winter and freezing thawing, all that sort of stuff. There are other technologies like foam jacking, which wouldn't give you that moisture content under there that you don't want, right?
What is mud jacking?
They literally inject mud and lift up concrete with it. Drill holes in the concrete, inject it in. But there's other technologies, like I said, foam insulator, foam jacking, which does the same thing, just doesn't, you don't get the moisture in there.
Yes, correct for that addition. So yes, we are looking into foam jacking. But mud jacking is the terminology that most people understand, but it's a new technology, like you said. Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, 11.2 Municipal Service Department Report. Ms. Shelley Terry.
Good morning, members of council.
Good morning.
And Madam Mayor. Did that backwards this time, sorry. So starting with Public Works, so street sweeping is ongoing. We've had a couple breakdowns and some weather events that have slowed down our progress, but they were back at it yesterday. The new sweeper is on the road now, so that's positive. Locates are ongoing throughout town now. That construction season has started. These requests have increased substantially. Cemetery burials are ongoing. Mechanics are just finishing up setting up all the summer equipment for Public Works and Parks. Grading is ongoing in the back alleys and roads, and operation is still happening and adding of gravel in those areas. Sign installations and repairs are ongoing. Public Works repaired a fence at the Arc Bark Park after a tree had fallen after some high winds. Parks seasonal staff is being onboarded and trained. This has been priority right now. We've been coordinating with Warehouser in the schools to plant 500 trees. Lawn maintenance has begun, grass cutting, pruning, leaf pickup. We also have started planting in our flower beds. We've been reaching out to businesses throughout town for sponsorships, and we just started that yesterday. We did post on Facebook originally and we're really not getting any traction, so we started making phone calls. Since yesterday, we have seven flower beds already sponsored and one hanging basket. Brush cleanup is ongoing in some of our treat areas, and we've begun highway ditch cleanup, and that'll continue throughout this week. The back truck driver is currently working on getting his 100 hours of competency training completed. He's doing substantial, like he's very good at what he does, so we've decreased that to 80 hours and he will be competency trained by the end of this week. Annual strainer maintenance at the water plant has been completed. Problem areas have been identified and sanitary sewer flushing has begun as a preventative maintenance strategy. The utility summer staff has started, and we're focusing on hydrant flushing and CC valve operation. We've stopped with the main valve operation just because we didn't get that push-through budget for main valve replacements. And when we touch those, we tend to break things, so we're just kind of focusing on the smaller valves that we can fix in-house with our back truck operator. The generator at the UV building has been serviced and is in good working condition after the break-in that occurred on April 20th, 2024. When that occurred, they did take the battery off the generator, so we just wanted to make sure that it was gonna work when we needed it for the UV building, and everything worked great. Landfill and Engineering, we've posted an RFP for the snow site, snow storage site improvements. This will include getting some detailed designs completed and kind of figuring out what our strategy is gonna be going forward to mitigate the snow storage site. Progress for streetlights for Fortis Alberta, so all the ones on Range Road 73 are now lit up. On 43rd Ave, those ones have now been lit up. 50th Street will be completed this week, and those will be active by the end of the week. We issued an approval letter for Adco last week for 50 Ave relocation. We do have a tentative date in mind for construction for Adco, and that's as of May 27th, but we'll finalize that in the next week or so. We extended the sidewalk RFQ, and that was due to an addendum that had went out on the day that we were to close it, so we just kind of issued an extension to allow everybody the fair opportunity to address the addendum. And so now we've currently started our evaluation of that. RFP closes for the trail upgrades on the 17th of May. We replaced all the fluorescent bulbs in the Murph Building at the landfill. It was identified as a safety hazard, so we had to get those all completed. We gather, we're gathering documents for the 2023 greenhouse gas reporting for Environment Canada, so we're getting all of that figured out so that we can get our reporting done to Environment Canada. First draft approval renewal application for the landfill has been submitted to the town, so we completed review yesterday, sent back to the consultant that's helping us with this, and they are going to issue it as of May 16th to Alberta Environment. And I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you very much for your report. Any questions for Ms. Terry? Counselor Cabana?
Thank you. Just curious, Shelley, how many summer staff do we have this year?
Eighteen for parks and one for utilities, so nineteen total.
Nineteen. We had twenty last year?
Yes, but two were in utilities, and due to not doing main valve operations this year and because drought conditions, we weren't sure how flushing was gonna go, we only opted to get one this year for utilities.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Counselor McGee?
The streetlights that we're putting in 50th Street and 43rd, are they, are they, sorry, I haven't been down there. Are they different? Are they sort of really interesting or fancy or?
No, they're just the regular streetlights, so they're just a galvanized pole, but they'll help light up the sidewalks and the street on those areas.
Counselor Evans?
Grading in the back alleys, that's that's pretty tricky with the size of our grader. And I gotta admit, I looked at what was done in my back alley and I, I don't know, I guess the bottom line is a, I think we could, we could maybe do a little better. It's there. Can we look at dragging those back alleys with a, you know, drag something behind a tractor, maybe? It's just so tight with that grader, and he's gonna push it, push the material from one side to the other. You know, if we, if we had something that we drug down there with a with a tractor, you know, like a harrows are coming to mind, but that's not what I'm talking about. You know, you can, you can use a big chunk of steel, but I would think that we could, we could tug something back there that would, that would pull the material in as opposed to kind of pushing it where it can't go, but you're, you're dealing with manholes back there as well. I realize that. Anyway, maybe we could, we could look at an alternative at some point to trying to jam our grader in there. Again, I just don't think we, we get the results that, you know, I noticed a couple of people, a couple of neighbors down there rake and, rake and gravel out of the, out of the grass along the alley, and if we, you know, if we want people to keep taking care of that portion, keep things tidy back there, then it'd be nice if we could, if we could maybe look at some options other than that.
I think, I think we can look at options. Sorry, Shelley, I'm just jumping here for a second. I will say that in a previous job just south of here, we, they had the same issue, and the operations manager went out and found a mini grader, and it's the perfect size. They liked it so much, they, I think they actually bought one. So, so those are an option. We could look at, you know, a rental of that or at least of that, we can, but that, that comes at a cost.
Yeah, that'd be great, and there are many options. The bottom line is you need something small enough that you can get in there. Ideally, you'd like to run the, run the water down the center of the, of the alley, you know, if you can.
I know our graders had, had a lot of difficulty with the people leaving their garbage cans out, parking back there, and making it even harder to navigate through, so we will look at what we can, we can find and.
Yeah, and that's all part of the issue with, with trying to use something that, that big. I understand why we're doing it. Don't get me wrong. In a previous life, I've also had to mess with this stuff, and yeah, yeah, tiny grader, you know, parking lot grader, whatever. Again, I, you know, if we can, if we can manage to hook something up to a tractor as well that we can lift and then, then drop, you know, that's, that's, that's another one to look at too, and I'm sure there's stuff out there even that's, that's already, already put together that, that could do the job. Anyway, I won't take any more time, just something that I, I've noticed in the last couple of years, and, and I know that other folks in my neighborhood are kind of dealing with, you know, fixing it up afterwards. And again, I'm not blaming anybody. The grader operator's got his challenges trying to get there, and if you can pull it, pull the grade to the, to the middle, then you're, you're catching all that water and then shoving it out the end, but it gets a little tricky too if you don't have enough material to bump it off the end of the, the end of the alley there. So anyway, look at it if you can. That'd be great.
I'll talk to operations and we'll, we'll see what we can do.
Do we have a truck with a blade?
No, but I do believe we do have some harrows that we, we can pull. I just don't know if it's just small for behind the gator. I'm not sure if we've got anything big enough, but we'll, we'll, I'll have a look.
Wouldn't a blade just work?
Well, you know, ideally, what you want it to, to gather the material there and, and drop it in the low areas as you go. A blade is okay, but again, this will kind of, if you're dragging something a little lighter, it'll, it'll kind of go along with the, with the, with the surface of the, of the alley. The issue that they're dealing with when you got a blade is you got manholes back there, so if you're going along trying to carry some material, you can latch on to one of those manholes and then you're, then you're pulling gravel out of your manhole and messing around, so that's why I, I'm, you know, a tiny grader is not gonna have the weight to kind of knock those around too much. I'm thinking, you know, I'm suggesting something to drag behind there.
Like a landscaping rake or something?
Yeah, like, like harrows, that would be okay, but if you can get something with a bit of an angle on it that you can, you can get a hold of that material and then kind of give yourself a little bit of a, make the alley into just a bit of a V ditch, then every, all that water, instead of sitting on the outside of the alley and pooling or on the edges, it'll, it should go to the center and then get carried away. But that would probably take a couple of years of rolling through and slowly kind of shaping them up. But, you know, if we can, if we can look at something, yeah, I'm sure there's stuff out there. I know there's all kinds of interesting bits and pieces to latch on to the grader, you know, to stop from leaving a winrow at driveways and pull gravel out of the ditch, and I'm sure there's, there's something like a set of harrows, just a, maybe a little bit more cutting ability, that's all.
Yep. So yeah, just a couple of comments. Sponsorships for flowers, that's fantastic. Great job. Thanks for that. And I guess maybe this is just more for Ms. Stone. So for the sponsorships, are we putting out a Facebook post or a post requesting? Oh, we have? Okay. Oh, okay. I didn't see it. So when did we put it out? Just so, a couple of weeks ago. Okay, just so we can share that and get that out, as well as the lights look great on 50th, on 43rd, and we put lights on the ring road, which Colin and I totally noticed, the two of us. We're both, I was like, well, I was like, were those lights there before or those new? Not very observant. I guess, again, are we gonna do like a celebratory post that, when it's done, and maybe take a picture and just give a shout out or something like that? Yeah, light up?
Yeah, I'll have to come out later at night and take some pictures.
And take some pictures.
Yeah, I'm sure we could get something out there, yeah.
That the project's done and it looks great. So yeah, just that, and then just to comment. Omniplex Pond, there were some barricades in the water. There, I don't know if there's some, there were some kids in the water last night, so I don't know if they put them in or, or they fell in or what, but we noticed just where the bridge is, that they're actually in the water now, so someone.
I'll send somebody over there and have a look at it.
Dig, dig them out. Counselor Clark?
Shifting gears a little bit, the 2023 GHD reporting, are we required or is it?
It's a requirement.
We are required to report on GHD. Okay, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much for your report. We will move to council reports right now. Counselor Cabana, you're up first.
Thank you. On May 4th, I had the opportunity with a couple of other council members to go to the MAC Center for the Silver, their Silver Anniversary. That was very well organized and congratulations to MAC Center for their Silver Jubilee. On the 8th, I had the opportunity to go to the Community Connection Game Night. There was about 30 participants from around Drayton, which are newcomers, and it was nice to. And it was nice to get to know them and get connected to them as well as them to have an opportunity to mix and mingle and make some networking in that event as well. So it was organized by Community Learning Association. On ninth, I had the opportunity to go to the Humans, Helping Humans AGM. Once again, the existing slate of officers were re-elected and it was nice to touch base with that organization again as well. On fourteenth, had a newcomers task team meeting. The newcomers task team is a new organization that's being formed right now to help newcomers to Drayton Valley, help them settle, help them also communicate to make connections and socialize and all of that. On top of that, to bridge any gaps that they have, I guess, being collaborative and contributing members of, of our community. So we are working on that and, and some of the, the challenges there is of course, integrating them to the Canadian culture, way of life and trying to eliminate any stigma around immigration in, in the community as well. Having said that, I'm just a kind of a public service announcement. I know we had a little bit of an incident last week with a newcomer to Canada. And, and you know, my humble request to the community is that these newcomers doesn't know the ways of our culture yet. They, they don't know what's appropriate and what's not and all of that. So just be patient with them if there's any mistakes done, done by them. Because I think once, once they get through that, that earlier hoop where it's, it's a challenge, it's a new culture, new environment and everything, they, they will be contributing, committee members to, to our, our community. So again, be, be patient with them a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. Council Evans?
Short and sweet for me today, the GNP meeting on May the eighth and then our budget discussions or our, our, our short meeting yesterday on the fourteenth is all I have to report today. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Council Sheriffs?
So I joined as a meeting with David Thompson, Health Advisory on May second and attended the MAC's twenty fifth anniversary center. The, on May tenth, West Central Airshed Society installed the air monitors at the CTC and the library. And I was having a garage sale and I was so busy that I couldn't even make it to the installation. But I've seen pictures and it looks really great. And that's all I got.
Thank you very much for that. Council McGee?
Well, I'll actually tell you a little bit about the West Central Airshed installation. It went, it went really well. Funnily enough, the, we actually had the, the smoke come in on Saturday, Saturday morning. And so you, you could see the blue turn right to orange within fifteen minutes. And so what they do is they track where our Central Airshed Monitoring Station is down on the Debe Lands. And so they just connect it to that and it's, it's sort of like that. A little bit of a nightlight in the library and the librarian is, was unable to be there for the installation as well. But the staff were there and it's, it's pretty exciting. It's a great opportunity for learning about our airshed and air quality, the AQIs. So it was, that, that's really an exciting piece. The Healthy Communities Coalition meeting is AGM is coming up, library board this week. So add more next, next week. Thanks.
Thank you for your report. Council Ballas?
Yeah, thank you. Other than the GNP and the budget discussions, that's, that's about all I got to report.
Thank you for that. Council Clark has slipped out, so I will give my report. I just got to go back here and find it here. So for myself, I attended a couple of mid-sized mayor's caucus meetings. Next steps for the caucus is we're inviting the premier to our executive committee meeting. And we'll continue advocating for those little pockets of funding for infrastructure. One of the things that, and I spoke about to council is upsetting is we've been cut back on our MSI, which is our new LGFF funding. And so we're very limited in the, in the projects that we can do when it comes to infrastructure. And it's very upsetting to hear that the city of Edmonton and city of Calgary received nine hundred and eighty-eight million dollars for just little pockets of funding to do infrastructure projects with no application, no criteria, no nothing. So I guess the work of the mid-sized mayor's caucus is to speak for small rural communities outside of Alberta munis and to approach the provincial government and say, you know, communities like ours, we could use an extra million dollars, extra two million dollars with our infrastructure projects. You know, Ms. Thompson worked on a spreadsheet to show what those projects look like, to show the decline in our MSI and LGFF. They're saying this is what we wanted, but clearly this is not what we wanted. Everybody across Alberta has had to tighten their belts and is struggling when it comes to budget and how we're going to be doing those projects. So the ask will be that, you know, rather than be giving big cities like Edmonton and Calgary such large amounts of dollars, maybe you could throw small rural, rural communities, which really are the heart and backbone of Alberta, a little bit of extra money so we can push forward these infrastructure projects and not put the pressure on our residents having to increase taxes all the time. So I will keep you posted as that meeting goes. We haven't got a date yet, but hopefully it will be good as we know that the premier is going into a leadership review. So with that coming, maybe she'll be very generous and, and take a, a second look at small rural communities like Drayton Valley. I know that when she was elected, she stated how important small communities like us are. So I think that she really does, you know, want to support us. So I think that we just need to revisit those conversations. As well, I attended twenty-five year anniversary at the MAC with both Monica and Emilla. It was a great evening with taking us back to Della Curry. Did a fantastic job representing Patsy Cline and walking us through history as well as there was a band called Whiskey Boys. Yeah, that did a really good job. And it was great to hear the history of the MAC and all the loopholes and obstacles that they kind of went through to try to build the MAC and twenty-five years, here they are strong and they've brought a lot of entertainment, you know, to our community. And it was a great evening and, you know, lots of support. So nice to see a lot of the community members out. So congratulations to them and everyone for pushing hard for twenty-five years. On May fifth was Red Dress Day. And as well, I had challenged my fellow mayors, Kevin Zahara from Stony Plain and William, or Kevin Zahara from Edson and William Choi from Stony Plain as part of the Moosehide Campaign. I know that both their councils did a walk for Red Dress Day, which was really interesting. So we'll maybe have to consider that next year to do something like that. It was kind of really nice. I had watched their videos and seen some of their pictures and everything. They got involved with some other organizations just standing up for violence towards women and children and particularly indigenous women, those that go missing. That's what the red dress is all about. Had a few economic development meetings and we also had our first meeting with Alberta Council, which I think is going to be great that we've hired them on. Now I think that was a great decision for council. Since I've been out in the community since the grant writer came to town, I have heard, had several organizations come up to me and give positive feedback saying thank you and how great it is to have that opportunity. One of the things that the grant writer had said is that collaboration is key. So I think that part of yesterday's kind of meet and greet was going to be a proposal from some of those groups that they get together on some of this grant writing. So I'm not sure if we will be tracking what those dollars will be and coming back to our community. So if twenty-five organizations went to the grant writings session and five of them are successful, will we be able to see or track what that return is? I guess so we see what the return on our dollar is.
Well, that's a great question. I believe they indicated that we would get a report on that, but I'll double check with, with the grant writer.
Okay, perfect. And that is it for me. I can circle back around to Deputy Clark when he comes back, if he has anything to include. Is our member of council that would like to make a motion to accept both our department and council reports as information? Council Comanna, thank you very much. All in favor? Bill?
In favor?
That is carried. Next up is council items, round table discussion. Does anybody have anything? I just have a few things. We talked about seniors week. It is during the week coming up, first week of June. If everyone can, I think we've gone in the past, if everyone can make it, Nancy sent out a calendar invite for that. We go, it's always a nice way to celebrate the seniors in our community. We have a joint council meeting that's coming up. I think the request was for May twenty-eighth in the afternoon for joint council items. I can send out a list and if anybody has any additions, please let myself and Bree know so she can get that sent to Tina. Also, has anyone noticed Summers Leaders, Summer Leaders Caucus come through their mailboxes and who will be attending? It is in June? I think it is. Yeah, it's there. So anybody kind of noticed that? Did anyone else receive the invitation for the premier CAEP next week in Red Deer? Yes? Oh, I forwarded it. I forwarded it. Yeah, I'm thinking about going. Anybody else going to be attending that? It's for MLAs and ministers and they sent it out, central mayor sends it out to all the mayors in the region next Thursday. Yeah, it's five thirty. Yeah. So maybe we'll send a response and Nancy can register us then for that. HTA Grad, are you able to go to that, do you know yet, Colin? Okay, so I did get a request to, for Holy Trinity Academy graduation and I will be away at FCM. Colin will be away as well. Is there? Rick and Monica, you're up next. Let me just look. So you would just go to the ceremony and say a little speech and myself or Jen can help you with that. I'm just going to look here, what date it was. It's on the Friday. Sixth or fifth or? Here it is. Invitation, I can forward it, June seventh. Graduation ceremony is June seventh. So I'm going to put it out to Monica or Rick first. It's your next in line.
Let me double check that again. I'll double check again, see if, I just got to check.
I'm around.
You're around? Okay.
Yeah, I'm not going to FCM still.
Okay. Okay, so Colin will double check and then if not, then I'll forward you the email and invitation and let Naomi at HTA know that you will be representing. I, next up, I guess I have on my list is we had a, a calendar invite go out for the workshop for the housing and it wasn't till the end of June. So that's quite late. I guess my question would be, are we waiting for the sale of our lands till then or are we still proceeding with some of the sale of our lands?
Sorry, Your Worship, I'm not sure I understand your.
So we talked about a few meetings ago, how we'd like to sell some of the town lands. So I guess nothing will happen until after this meeting because it's part of that?
We're in the process of structuring an RFP to put out to the realtor community.
Oh, so that will still go out?
Yeah, we're, we're still, we're still moving on, on the, on the sale of surplus lands.
Okay, okay. I was just wondering if that, because I know that was to be included as part of the workshop as well.
I don't recall that. I mean, we can certainly bring a list of lands as part of the workshop, but I don't think Mr. Vanna was planning on attending that, nor did we invite him.
Well, I, I believe Council Comanna has asked for that several times as part of the housing, kind of to figure out what lands we own. Is that not what you requested the last couple of times?
Yeah, not, not only just the housing, but overall big picture of utilization of land. I know that you mentioned it might not be feasible at that time, but at least if we can look at housing perspective there, that would be important, I think. But having said that, unfortunately, I won't be there for that day as, as I mentioned, I'm away, so.
What is the day of that workshop?
It's June sometime, July sometime?
No, it's, I thought at the end. Okay, so maybe do we want to, over lunch, have a little chat about what days maybe where can we can change that?
If you don't mind, then if not, all the means go ahead.
Yeah, well, I know that you've been pushing for this as part, so I think it's important that you're there for this conversation.
So, so if I may, so June, June twenty-fifth, because that's the first date we can find in your calendars. But I'm, I'm a little bit confused about surplus land. So again, we're bringing forward a, it's separate from affordable housing. We're bringing forward a, a report about surplus land and the sale of the same land. That was my understanding of, of, of what we, what we wanted to do. If council, I, I think I understand your question, Council Comanna is, is that, are any of those lands, could they be used for affordable housing? That's your question?
Yeah, could they be used for affordable housing as in, you know, that is, is that the use that we are looking at, at those lands? Then we can discuss that and how our RFP can be sent out for, for sale of those lands in, in that context as well. On top of that, looking at any need for, for the municipality as well, right? If per se, there, there's a land that we're looking for in the future to, to have town office or something else. But I, I know that you mentioned that it's a little, little bit of a task and I understand.
Well, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, council, but I think it's not just a workshop for affordable housing. I think it's, we know that we have a housing shortage in general too. So I think, and I thought maybe Colin had mentioned this, that there's an appetite to, for all housing, right? Not just affordable housing. And then I had brought up, you know, even developers. I know we had a meeting a while back with developers and builders in the community of how to stimulate them getting to build. So I think it's a big, bigger conversation. It's not just affordable housing and what's happening with Brazzo. It's happening with, there's potential developers and builders that are interested in some of our land that want to build housing. So if I'm, and, and I don't know, maybe it'll all come out of that workshop. So I don't know if there's any maybe direction to administration. I'm thinking it'll be a more of a working workshop and then.
So there's no barriers for developers to come in and apply for, for development? So I, I'm not quite, I'm just, I'm concerned about putting together relevant material that will help you have your conversation. Affordable housing is certainly one thing. The lands that we, that council wishes to, to sell are, you know, a bit of a different issue. If we want to retain some of that for affordable housing, you know, we can certainly look at that. But I kind of need a little more, a little more direction as to what you're looking for in that workshop.
Monica, did you want to add something?
That was, that's what I thought we were doing on the twenty-fifth is looking at our lands and property, deciding what we want to keep or sell and just sell what we want to sell, put it out there. You know, it doesn't matter if it's industrial, empty lot, whatever for development. I thought that was the plan. I didn't even know it had anything to do with affordable housing. It was just a plan to get rid of some of our properties that we're not using. That was my understanding.
Yes, Emilla, did you have something to add?
Yeah, no, I, I think my vision was, or the idea was that actually having a conversation about overall big picture where affordable housing is definitely a piece. And if, if you're saying only that, you know, that piece can be brought forward and then we are going to have another session about the. then we are going to have another session about the, the overall picture, or can we have the same discussion at, at, at the same session? I don't know. But what I was trying to get to is that, about how the housing is handled in our community and which organization that's handled right now, and is that the way to go? Is there a better way that we can, we can handle affordable housing and housing as, as a whole, as, as Mayor mentioned? Because just talking about how affordable housing is not gonna solve our housing needs, per se.
So I think there's a bit of confusion of what that workshop is going to look like. So it's going to be, I guess the key word is working workshop to kind of sort out what council's expectations. I think we've had our presentations on what our affordable housing in the community looks like, and now we need to decide whether we're going to subsidize that and keep going or or not. But I also think there's a discussion that we know there's a housing shortage, even going back where, you know, councillor Clark has brought up. I can't remember what, it's not secondary suites, it's, you know, removing barriers when it comes to garage suites and, and things like that. And then, you know, we've had discussions with developers, we've had discussions about selling our lands. So I think it's a, there's a lot of discussion that's going to happen. What's required from administration? I don't know if there's a lot, because I think we need to flush some things out. We did have a list from Mr. Peter Van on what the initial, some initial properties were for sale. If we can even just bring that list back and have a discussion with that list and get started, and then maybe just kind of flush out what everyone's kind of expectations are and where we want to go. Because we're, we've all kind of got input. I think we're all on the same page. Maybe we're not all speaking the same language, but I think we're all moving in the same direction. If I'm not wrong, did you want to add anything, councillor Evans?
Sure, thank you. I, I just picture us, yeah, having our, having our list of, of properties that we own. I'd like to see them plotted on a map i- if we can. But, and I, I think part of that conversation is okay, identifying the ones that we will not have any plans for and, and we should be moving on for if we can. You know, limitations of development, we're, we're on quite a few, I think. You know, pipelines, et cetera. We'd have to look at that. And, and, and I think in my mind, I'd just like to boil it down to, to a list of properties that, that we're interested in selling, a list of properties that we want to hang on to, that may be suitable for affordable housing or, or other, other requirements of the municipality. You know, we've, we've talked very long term about, about the, you know, the space requirements and, and the limited space available in this building. Of course, we've also got the, you know, the, the RCMP looking for a building in the future and, and, you know, again, I, I think those are, those are down the road quite a ways, but if we can kind of identify tentatively where, where we think that kind of stuff may, may end up, where we have an opportunity for affordable housing and, and where we have a piece of land that, that can develop, be developed for, you know, your standard lot structure, whatever the case may be, if we think it's, it's worthwhile to, to hang on to and, and, and look at what's available for, you know, formerly from the, from the, the federal government, that acceleration fund that's, I guess, now going to get funneled through the province. But where there's opportunities possibly for some of that, so we can kickstart a, a development. So developable properties that we want to hang on to for various reasons, and I would say developable properties that we want to get rid of and properties that we're stuck with because they're, they're undevelopable. That, that's what I'd like to see, I guess, in the end, those three lists and what's on them. Is that fair, Wally? Is that clear as mud?
Clear as mud. I mean, any, any piece of land is developable with the right amount of money. So let's keep that in mind, but we can, we can work on those three categories and, and bring that back.
Yeah, and, and I'm just thinking that'll come out of the conversation, Wally. I'm not asking you folks to, to, to have those precise lists ready for us when you come through.
And a presentation.
Keep that in mind. I'd like us to, to kick it around and, and, and kind of have them generally sorted that way. And then we come out of there and we say, okay, here's, here's the list of what we're going to move on from. Here's our, the limitations. Here's the list of what we want to hang on to and look at, is there opportunities for, whether that's affordable housing or other stuff? And, and then we'll have some, some guidance anyway, a bit of a roadmap moving forward. Yeah, and if we have some that, you know, have a pipeline going through the middle of them, then, you know, that's, that's, and then we got to pursue that, see if we can, we can get that reclaimed or what we can work around or what the setbacks are. You know, there, there's obviously some, some issues with that kind of stuff. But yeah, then we can end up with, with a full list of how we can, how we can move on from them, what we're going to end up with and shuffle some stuff around.
Yeah, hopefully that makes sense. I, I don't think we're looking for a presentation from administration to say, you know, this is what you're asking. Like I said, I think the key is working, right? It's a working workshop. I'm not sure 100% we know what we're doing, but I know we want to sell some lands, we want to see if we want to subsidize affordability, and we want to, you know, see some, some, some homes get built in the community, right? We have doctors that are coming and we want to ensure that they have places to live and things like that. So you kind of got what we're saying now? Sorry, it's not very clear, but we can chat more i- if you need to, to kind of get in that direction. Does council have anything else under round table discussions? No, I'm going to circle back around to a deputy clerk. Oh, sorry, Bill, did you have something?
Well, I just wanted to mention Fort Mac and the evacuees. And if we have been in contact or open the door to discussion on how we may assist if needed.
Thank you for that. So with everything that's happening, evacuation in Fort Mac and, and the wildfires, have we opened the door for an invitation or have we reached out to say if there's anything you need or, or we made that connection? I guess that might be an Elvira and a Tom question, and neither one are in the room right now, Bill. So perhaps we'll circle back around to that.
I can comment on that, Madam Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
The, no, we haven't put our hand up to say, hey, we're, we're here to help. The evacuation orders for Fort Mac, you know, they, they reach out to the communities that they know can put up a reception center. So Edmonton, I believe, is, is one, and there was a couple named in, in their evacuation order. So they know we're here, Alberta Emergency Management. If they require a reception center from us or any resources that, that may be required of the emergencies going on, then they'll, they'll reach out, they'll put a call out. And Tom and Elvira and Cody are, are involved in that network. So if there's a need and a call goes out and we have the ability to, to respond to that, then we'll certainly let council know.
Okay, thank you for that. There's no further discussion on, yeah, on round table. I'm going to circle back around to deputy Clark for his council report.
I just had one thing I wanted to bring up. Last night, we attended the PPRRC committee meeting. One thing that sort of came out of that was Breton went without doctors for a month, and they're supposed to have doctors two days a week, from the sounds of things. So the committee decided they wanted to craft a letter on behalf of PPRRC and send to AHS. And there's also discussion about, you know, having Drayton Valley sign on to that, you know, the mayor, and then also Reeve from Brazza County, as well as the mayor from the village of Breton. So I've been tasked with crafting that letter, so I should have that out here by Friday, I think. So is there an appetite, I guess, from this council to have the mayor sign that in kind of solidarity with, with Breton and letting AHS know that that's unacceptable for, for a community, right? Like, you know, you can't have that, you know, especially when AHS has this program and they've, they've committed to having a certain amount of doctors there for a certain amount of days and, you know, those, those commitments aren't being met, so.
Yeah.
Makes sense? Yeah. So do we need a motion to do that or?
To send a letter?
Or, or just sign on to the letter? Like, I don't think it has to be something sent by Drayton Valley, per se. It'll be sent by PPRRC, maybe with a DV mayor signatory on there.
Okay, yep, forward the letter, and then we can share it with everyone and put it on our, I guess, probably not on our letterhead, it'll be on joint. Okay, yeah. And then one can have a look at it and sign away. Okay, perfect. So council reports, council items. We have information items, Brazzo Foundation minutes meeting. We have Brazzo County Agriculture Service Board. There is an ask in that letter, I noticed. The ask is coming from Brazzo County to request that the town of Drayton Valley consider providing funding for educational programs and organizations as they provide valuable education programs and resources to the agriculture community. And it is from councillor Anthony Heinrich. Mr. Von Klaveren, I think that you would like to speak to this too? Unless Mr. Ferrish, you would like to start?
Thank you. So on that question to the rest of council, so I reached out to my counterpart in the Brazil County. So I got the information that this was really meant as a heads up, that the council did fund $3,000 for this initiative. And this is basically a heads up that the request could come to us as well from this organization straight away, so not from the agricultural board, but from the, I have to say that, the name in there.
Oh, Anthony Heinrich, the councillor?
That's, yeah, so from, from the organization itself. Thank you for the training center, yes.
Oh, because he's the, he's the chairperson, Brazzo County Ag Service Board Chairperson.
Yeah, so from the, there could be a request coming to this council for support of the training center initiative from them directly. So this basically letter is only a heads up.
Okay.
That it could be that they say, if that's the case, of course, they are supportive because Brazzo County itself did already $3,000 support for this initiative.
Okay, oh, perfect. Thank you for that clarity. So we can receive it as information today? We don't have to respond with the, excuse me, decision?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that, Hans. Next was the letter to the Minister of Transportation, Disability Services Professional Special Week, 2024 Mayor Carbon Tax Appeal Letter. Is there a member of council that would like to accept these as information, please? Councillor Sheriff, thank you very much for that. And we will break for lunch, and before we break for lunch, maybe I will, we want to have a working lunch? Do we want to, do you want to have a break? I was going to say move us into closed? It's up to you. I'm, if you, if, I don't expect administration to work through lunch. So if you're needing some time, we could reconvene at.
I, I don't mind working through my lunch. I guess it depends on what you want to talk about in closed and who I need for support.
For me, I just have economic development, just a meeting that we had yesterday, just because it's an early discussions. So it would be Shelley, so maybe have a little break and then come back.
Sure.
And move us into closed around 12:30 or something, if that's okay, Shelley? Yeah? Okay. So there's a member of council that wants to move us in now? Thank you very much, councillor Gamanna. All in favor? That is carried. Okay, thank you. And who can move us out of closed? Thank you very much. Tom moved us out of, moved us out of closed at 1:48. All in favor? That is carried, and I will adjourn the meeting at 1:50.